Hello and welcome to the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for the City of Venice Council Member. My name is Kathy McCracken and I am a Director of the League of Sarasota County. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan public policy organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. Our candidate forums are held under our education fund, a nonpartisan 501(c)(3) corporation, and with a mission of voter service and education. The League accepts both women and men as members. The League does not support or oppose political candidates or parties. Today, we welcome two candidates running for the Venice City Council. They are Brian Kelly and Bill Wilson. If you are a registered voter in the City of Venice, you can vote in the general election regardless of your party affiliation. Let's review the forum rules. The forum will be recorded and posted on our website and other media outlets as determined by the League. The recording is the property of the League. Written permission must be sought for the use of the video, which may not be edited or altered. Every candidate will be asked the same question. Candidates should answer all questions within two minutes. Our timer will display a warning when 15 seconds remain and a red stop when time is up. I will rotate which candidate begins answering questions by district. Questions were developed by the Sarasota League and submitted by voters. Any opinions expressed tonight are those of the candidates and not of the League of Women Voters Sarasota County. This forum will be conducted without rebuttal. We ask all candidates to speak only for themselves and not to provide insight into their opponents. We looked at candidates to help us understand their policy positions, problem-solving skills, and values so that we can make better choices as informed voters. And now to begin. Mr. Kelly, please introduce yourself and tell us what in your education and experience will help you if elected to the Venice City Commission?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Women Leader Voters. I'm a 40-year native of Sarasota and a three-year Venice homeowner. I'm an entrepreneur, a small business owner, a board member of the Coastal and Heartland National Estuary Partnership, co-founder of a local nonprofit Hands Along the Water. I'm running for Venice City Council because I'm committed to slowing development, preserving our environment, and water quality, and protecting your health and well-being. We have a responsibility to preserve both the natural and built environment to ensure we leave it better for future generations. Our environment is not only our economy, it is the foundation of our health and well-being. We all realized this during the 2017 red tide that had devastating effects on our local economy. Shops, restaurants, tourism was down. Most couldn't even go outside without coughing. And now this year, we're dealing with the pandemic. And it's like, what's next? It's time we start preparing for what the future holds by being mindful of what's going on on a local level, but as well, what's going on with our state. You know, our hurricanes are intensifying and becoming more frequent. We have salt intruding into our aquifers and getting into our wells. Lake Okeechobee is a polluted mess. Phosphate mining in neighboring counties are spilling radioactive waste into our water supply. So when I say what's next, I mean it's only a matter of time before these issues impact the city budget and our lives. So now that I've shared the bigger picture of what I'm about, I want to bring you back to our local issues. We have a list of problems and issues that we must deal with here. So I look forward to answering more of these questions and sharing with you my perspectives on them.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Wilson, please introduce yourself and tell us what in your education and experience would help you if elected to the Venice City Commission?
Thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure for me to be here. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I'd just like to take a few minutes first just to let you know a little bit about who I am. I'm actually a 70-plus-year native of Sarasota County, and I'm actually a 27-year citizen of Venice. I've got a number of things that really have prepared me for this. I started with a large insurance, well, it was a small insurance agency when I started with it, and I've been in it for 27 years. I am currently the president of that agency. And when I'm elected on the third, I will be retiring on the fourth so that I can devote my entire time to this endeavor. But that has given me quite a background in budgeting and all the different things it takes to run a business. I've also been very active in things like two terms on the Venice Area Chamber Commerce Board. I'm a past president of Venice Main Street. I was six years on the All Face Food Bank Board, the time when we literally doubled the capacity of it. We were able to buy another building and literally double the capacity. And now at this time of the pandemic, what a great thing that we had the foresight and the vision to do that. So I've been involved for a very long time. I'm a product of Sarasota County Schools. I was actually one of the first people that graduated from college without ever leaving Sarasota. It's when the University of South Florida teamed up with New College. I was one of the very first graduates to do that. So I've always been very honored to be here. I think we all live in paradise. I appreciate our water quality as well. I have been a voter, a fisherman, a waterskier, a scuba diver, you name it. I've done it in our waters here. And I've done a lot of things to try to help out with that as well. I founded the Sun Coast Reef Rovers Dive Club over 20 years ago, and we've been doing regular cleanups under the pier and along both sides of the jetty, and even now the mooring field. We have removed literally tons.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Wilson, please describe the unique needs of the City of Venice. If elected, what would be your highest priority goal to accomplish for the city?
Well, the jewel of our city, of course, is the downtown. And I really have to kind of start off with commending the folks that had been on the council for the last few years. They actually passed a bond issue, and we were able to build, we constructed our entire infrastructure downtown. It came out an absolutely beautiful result. They actually were able to get the funding where we were able to resurface 70% of our roads. We have just built a new public safety building that just opened up. And as we speak, we're rebuilding our fire station number one and doing some adjustments in City Hall. So I have to commend those folks for what they've done. And you know, I figure there's two types of candidates. There's one who has a particular issue that they're really passionate about, and they're all about that one issue. But the truth of the matter is, there's a whole multitude of issues that we have to deal with here. I have actually served on city council previously. I was elected in 2004. I currently serve on the planning commission. And what I want to see happen is my primary goal is to make sure that we continue down the path that we have of careful financial planning. We did all those things without breaking the bank. We have money in the reserves. It has been very well accomplished. I want to make sure that we have someone, and that's me, who really knows how to do that and continues that type of work. We have a fabulous downtown. People don't realize it, but years ago, I was the first man on council who championed the 35-foot height rule for our downtown. That's the goose that laid the golden egg. People drive down, they come off of the 41, they come through our quaint little downtown. They see a divided, canopied boulevard. They arrive at the beach and they have fallen in love with that. We need to keep our cotton picking hands off of our downtown. And as it gets rebuilt, it was a building not too long ago, fits perfectly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Kelly, please describe the unique needs of the City of Venice. If elected, what would be your highest priority goal to accomplish for the city?
Yeah, my highest priorities when elected would be to focus on what the city residents want. From Myaca River in northeast Venice, we need to talk about all of those communities getting a park. They all deserve a park and they need a park. I also want to focus on continuing our infrastructure improvements. We've been spending $10 million a year on infrastructure upgrades, which is great, but we need to continue in that same direction. As far as what the same direction, we need to slow growth. I am a big advocate of that. We've got thousands of homes that are already on the slate to be built out there in northeast Venice. But I think we need to slow this growth down and focus on what the residents want, which is a park out there. Also, we need to improve on our roads. We have some failing roads, and I am all for public and private partnerships and working with the county to improve on these roads. And also in the island, I'm very big with Venice Heritage. I believe we need to preserve our historical Venice downtown. It looks great right now, so let's keep it that way. Also, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Mr. Kelly, are you in favor of the proposed changes to the city charter which address term limits and the scope of the mayor's authority?
To be honest with you, I am not too familiar with that question, so I will not answer that, but I will look into it for sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Wilson, are you in favor of the proposed changes to the city charter which address term limits and the scope of the mayor's authority?
No, I do believe that's a reaction. Some folks are just not happy in the community at the moment, and I think that's a reaction to it. That's the type of thing you don't take lightly. We've been a city manager former government for years. The important thing is that everyone on council does need to realize we have seven equal votes. It doesn't matter who you are in the council, you have the same power. That needs to, I think, stay that way. I don't want to change the system. I just think it's important for everyone on council to realize just what is our former government and adhere to it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson, you both serve on one of the City of Venice Advisory Boards. Please tell us which board you serve on, why you selected that board, and what lessons you have learned from your service?
Well, when I was on council the first time, I was actually liaison to a number of boards. One of my favorite ones was the Architectural Review Board. I also care very deeply about our heritage, and I think it's very important. We do have like six different organizations here in Venice that all have interest of our history at heart. I just think sometimes it would be good if we could get every one of us all working together on the same page so we could address things a little bit better. But I feel very strongly, I enjoy being on the Architectural Review Board. I think it serves a very important purpose, and that was probably my favorite.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kelly, you both serve on one of the City of Venice Advisory Boards. Please tell us which board you serve on, why you selected that board, and what lessons you have learned from your service?
Thank you. Yes, the advisory board I serve on is the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals. I'm a new member to that earlier this year, and it's not an active, not a very busy board. We don't have a lot of meetings, so I don't have much to say on that right now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kelly, what steps, if any, would you take to balance future growth with existing developments and provide sufficient infrastructure and community services for the increasing population?
Yes, I would definitely be a proponent of slowing growth. And I believe that developers should pay all of the impact fees required so that, you know, we basically don't want the developers coming in, building their communities, and leaving the residents all the mess. When I say mess, I mean, you know, the infrastructure improvements that need to happen in the City of Venice, also stormwater, stormwater quality, nutrient pollution. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Wilson, what steps, if any, would you take to balance future growth with existing developments and provide sufficient infrastructure and community services for the increasing population?
I think it's something we have to be very careful of. You know, the growth takes place out in areas that are joint planning association areas. There's nine of them, but they're actually still in the county. And so what we have to be very careful of is if we become so difficult and so much that we require, what can easily happen is that they just take the tack of, well, why should we develop under the city? That's a lot more difficulty for us. We'll just do it under the county. And the drawback of that is, is then we have no say in what it looks like of what they build. We have no say-so on what the infrastructure is, no say-so on what the buffering is. And the big thing is, is that we no longer collect taxes from them. They would add on to our tax bases, they should. Now, if they go back to the county, what happens is they continue to come down and drive on our roads and use our beaches and go to our restaurants and have those impacts on our city, but they don't pay down one. And the other thing people need to do their homework on, there is a limit to how much you can actually put impact fees on folks. And we're actually very close to maximizing what those impacts are. So my thing is, is we have to be very careful to tell them what we want, guide that development as best we can, but don't make it so onerous that they just abandon us and go back and stay in the county where they still are. They have to go through a lot of process to get themselves into the city. And let's not discourage them because that's the area we want our growth to occur at. Both the city and the county have agreed that's the proper area for it to happen. But if we chase them off, we've lost all control. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, what steps, if any, would you take to preserve Venice's character, historical places, John Nolan's planning heritage, and cultural resources?
Well, I think the big thing as far as preserving it is to realize what we have already downtown. Talk about preserving it, I mean with the work that's just been done. I've been here for years, and I remember when there were old buildings and everything. But our infrastructure has all been rebuilt down there, and we even have some new buildings. So the big thing is to keep the feeling. Now, one of the things people don't realize is, you know, I was the champion for the 35-foot rule back years ago. We had some folks that were actually friends of mine wanted to build a fourth story on what was going to be their home over the building, over their business. And we got that stopped. We passed the rule that said 35 foot was it. Just recently, I'm on the planning commission now. They were looking at, and the consultant actually suggested that we go to four stories in our downtown. I spoke up very convincingly that we didn't want to have anything over three stories back then. We still don't want to have anything over three stories now. Say that is what people look at. It's the epitome of Venice. It's what they think of when they think about Venice. We need to leave our cotton picking hands off of that. And so when it comes to preserving Venice, it's like, let's keep it the ambiance and the feel that we see it as right now. I will always fight to preserve it as it is.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Kelly, what steps, if any, would you take to preserve Venice's character, historical places, John Nolan's planning heritage, and cultural resources?
I'm a big advocate for John Nolan's plan. I love the walkable cities. I love downtown Venice. I would really love to see some of these new communities being built follow that same plan. Definitely preserving the cultural heritage in Venice. I know we'll be housing Old Betsy in a new building. So I really, really love the feel, and I want to continue with that Venice heritage. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kelly, last month, the City's Architectural Review Board approved the demolition of a 1926 home which is located within the John Nolan Historic District. That decision has been appealed to the Venice City Council. If elected, how would you vote and why?
That's a great question. I would have to take into consideration the building currently, the status of it, but I would fight to preserve that building. I think being an architectural wonder that it is, it may be a little decrepit, but I think it can be definitely fixed, remodeled, so that we can keep our old historical homes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Wilson, last month, the City's Architectural Review Board approved the demolition of the 1926 home which is located within the John Nolan Historic District. That decision has been appealed to the Venice City Council. If elected, how would you vote and why?
Well, I'm very familiar with that situation, and I have to say, I'm actually, and a lot of folks that know me were surprised, but I was one of the folks that actually signed for that appeal. And I did it on purpose. Now, in this particular situation, it quite honestly might be too little, too late because we actually allowed that building to deteriorate to a point where it might not be feasible to do it. But I wanted to at least have the conversation to let council members know that it is important to us. That's part of our heritage. Once that building is gone, it's gone for good. We never get it back. And I love that we have a style and we have our faux idea of what Venice looks like, and that's really nice. But when it comes to those few historic structures that we still have, I think we need to go above and beyond. And I think this might highlight the fact that we need to step up to the plate ahead of time, not wait until it's too late. That building had been allowed to deteriorate. It had holes cut in the floor. It had all types of things that have been done to it. I'm not sure that it can be saved. But I did want the voice to be heard that there are folks out here that are very seriously, we want to preserve that heritage. We want to keep it as much as possible. And so I would very strongly support, once I heard all the evidence, I changed my mind. It may be too far gone, but I am one of the people that asked that if you looked at. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, if elected, what steps would you take, if any, to assure affordable and low-income housing in the city?
That's always a very, very difficult one. Affordable housing, workforce housing, whatever, whatever you want to call it. That's actually a problem nationally. I mean, everywhere has difficulties with that. But it is especially difficult when you get into an affluent area like we do have here in Venice. Sadly, I do fear that it's one of those things that really will require more of a regional approach to really get something solved. In all honesty, as a small city of 23,000 people, we just can't, in all honesty, afford to provide sufficient incentives to encourage people to be willing to go ahead and build under that, you know, model. I think it's something where we're going to have to... Well, the other thing that happens about that is that on a regular basis, there's a thing called the Sadowski Funds, and those funds are used for affordable housing. And unfortunately, the state has been consistently robbing that fund for other things. So I think the state, the city, needs to step up and do what it can to try to encourage those funds to stop being diverted. And then when they have, then to see how we can partner with Sarasota County and see if we can do something that's to our mutual benefit.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Kelly, if elected, what steps would you take, if any, to assure affordable and low-income housing in the city?
Yeah, I definitely agree with Mr. Wilson. We do need affordable housing. It is definitely something that is a lot bigger than just here locally in the City of Venice. But I will be the voice on council to do what, to take what steps is needed to get low-income or affordable housing in the city. I think it's one way that we can keep our families, our young residents here locally. That's it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Mr. Kelly, what steps would you take to promote a diversified business environment that encourages entrepreneurship and supports existing businesses?
I think... Yeah, I apologize. I can't think off the top of my head. That's a great question, and I'm just not too familiar with how to answer that. I apologize.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Wilson, what steps would you take to promote a diversified business environment that encourages entrepreneurship and supports existing businesses?
Yes, as a past president of Venice Main Street, which is another wonderful organization which does so much to, really to support our downtown and its merchants, which is, I think, very commendable. One of the things that happens from the city's point of view is that we do funding for that Venice Main Street. And I know as our budget is very tight right now, and they did get through relatively unscathed this year, but next year I really anticipate it's going to be a bit more difficult. So I know we'll be tightening the belt. I think that's one of those areas where it's extremely important to continue to support. In this case, it would be Venice Main Street financially because it does do exactly that. It supports our, enhances our downtown and its merchants. And while we're at it, I'll also say it also supports Venice Area Viewification, Inc., and I've been president of that four times. And that's another one that I think is very important as a council person, that I would still continue to support both those organizations even as we tighten our belt. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, what actions would you take to foster sustainable economic development and bring clean jobs to the city?
There again, as having been a 12-year, 12 years I've spent on the Venice Area Chamber of Commerce Board, I'm very familiar with what they do. And anytime we can get partnerships, and that would be like, say, partnerships with Venice Main Street or partnerships with the Venice Area Chamber of Commerce, I think we need to try to take those opportunities so that we can encourage what they're doing and they can be familiar with what we're doing. And if there are some areas where we can actually work together, I'm always one that, I like to think outside the box, and if there's ways where we can do that, I would certainly support such a partnership.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Kelly, what actions would you take to foster sustainable economic development and bring clean jobs to the city?
Couple words that ring a bell is clean jobs and economic stability. And when I think of that, I think of also sustainable and jobs where, you know... I'm drawing a blank here, guys. I apologize. I'll have to pass on this. I apologize.
All right, Mr. Kelly, let's go with this. What steps, if any, would you take to protect the city's natural resources, wetlands, rural areas, and open space for conservation purposes?
Definitely, this is, I'm more familiar with this area. Being an environmentalist, partnering with nonprofits, and also, you know, we need to deal with nutrient pollution. I believe that is one of our biggest issues here with the stormwater runoff. Also, the development that's just bulldozing over our wetlands. So I believe, you know, partnering with different government agencies and nonprofits, slowing growth to ensure that we can preserve our that we can preserve our, our natural spaces here.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Wilson, what steps, if any, would you take to protect the city's natural resources, wetlands, rural areas, and open space for conservation purposes?
Well, I've actually taken many steps already. As I mentioned, I have been president of Venice Urbanification, Inc. numerous times. And recently, well, two years ago, about five years ago, the idea emerged that we could actually, there's an area, the old abandoned railroad line that runs from the historic train depot down to Center Road, between the industrial area and the intercoastal waterway, and just happens to run right alongside, parallel with the Venetian Waterway Park, which we also built. But the idea came up is, I bet we could plant trees there. Well, we were an overnight success. After a mere three years of negotiating with the Sarasota County, I had the pleasure of actually signing the agreement that allowed for creation of the Venice Urban Forest. In the two years since, we have planted literally hundreds of trees, thousands of understory plants, and I'm talking trees that are 20, 25 foot tall. And in the next few weeks, we're about to plant another 100 large oak trees. And that's just the beginning. There's still a lot more to come. So I've actually done a lot as far as, you know, people say, well, developers are removing trees. We're putting a natural forest. There can be anything else in there. It's just going to be a natural forest for almost two miles, and we're creating a natural jewel right in the heart of our city. And I'm extremely proud of that fact.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, what steps would you take, if any, to promote conversion of septic tanks to domestic sewer systems, enhance outfall, monitoring, and foster other water quality improvements?
Well, the interesting thing of it is, septic tanks are not really the big issue here in the city. At the moment, there are 45 remaining septic tank systems in the city, only 10 of which are actually here on the island. But if you go just slightly south of us, down in the South Venice area, there are 6,000 septic tanks down there. And regrettably, there's not too much we can do about that. But one of the things the city has done is they actually have a program for those 45 remaining ones, that they'll do free inspections, which is a $500 value. They'll go ahead and do that for those few remaining ones there to make sure that they're operating as they should and properly. I think it's a great program. I would certainly keep that going.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kelly, what steps would you take, if any, to promote conversion of the septic tanks to domestic sewer systems, enhance outfall, and monitor, outfall monitoring, and foster other water quality improvements?
Definitely with our outfalls at the beaches. We do have some monitoring devices on them currently. We're trying to decide where our, our pollution sources are coming from, so that we can address those. And the city is doing a good job with the free inspection services for the, the few remaining septic tanks that are on the island. There are also some, some ways that we could enhance the, the function of those existing sewages, onsite sewage plants, also, you know, enhancing our water quality by having a, you know, a better idea of what we're doing with stormwater ponds. They are, you know... 50% experts to, to talk to the council, to make some decisions on, on what needs to happen there, as well as pre-treatment to these outfall devices at the beaches. That just looks terrible for us to, to be swimming out there and seeing these pipes dumping right into the, the Gulf. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Kelly, what steps, if any, would you take to increase programs for people with mental illness and addiction issues, especially for veterans?
Yes, I am all for working with more nonprofit agencies, bringing them into the city, and, and work with our homeless population, and deal with the, you know, these are major social issues that I am willing to address, to take care of.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Wilson, what steps, if any, would you take to increase programs for people with mental illness and addiction issues, especially for the veterans?
Being a veteran myself, I certainly appreciate the, the effort to do things, to help out in that regard. Once again, as a small city of 23,000, I don't really feel we have the government facilities that can appropriately handle that situation. So it would be a case of having partnership with our nonprofits in this area. But I also think we really, once again, would need to reach out to the county, where they have more facilities and, and really more assets available to try to tackle that problem, and see if we couldn't work together to our mutual benefit.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, what actions would you take to provide a transportation system that enhances mobility and includes a well-connected pedestrian and bicycle network as envisioned in the Venice Comprehensive Plan?
Well, I'm all for bicycles. You know, I'm one of the, one of the, the four people that are very significantly involved in the fact that we have the Venetian Waterway Park. That was many years ago. We did that as a hiking biking trail, and I'm always very proud to say that the legacy trail connected up to us, because we were there first. But there is really a layout of being able to ride your bicycle around the entire area of Venice. Part of it is along the Venetian Waterway Park. You can come in behind Caspersen Beach. You come along the beaches on the road there, bring yourself back downtown. And there, again, you can go by the, the old Chamber of Commerce building. And that's actually the Babbitt Building now. And you can get back onto the trail, go over the bridge, connect up to the legacy trail. So you can go for, literally for miles and miles as far as biking. As far as alternate transportation, I know there has been efforts to try to have bus service during the, you know, small bus service during the busy, you know, winter season. That has not really proven to be very cost-effective, so I'm not sure that it's something that really can be done again. But I certainly am willing to think outside the box and look at all those alternatives. But I know when it's been tried in the past, it just really didn't pay for itself.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Kelly, what actions would you take to provide a transportation system that enhances mobility and includes a well-connected pedestrian and bicycle network as envisioned in the Venice Comprehension, Comprehensive Plan?
Yeah, I think we need to look at a couple different avenues with that. We could definitely look at possibly bike rentals for downtown, or an electric shuttle of some sort that drives pedestrians up and down and around the City of Venice, to and from the beach and parking areas. Also with our infrastructure improvements, roads, you know, we will be making sure that those have adequate bike lanes, so that, you know, bikers can travel to and from. I, I think it's, it's very important to look out for our pedestrians, and, you know, improving our, our efficiency mobility is definitely a plus when, when you look back at the, the John Nolan, the original plan of walkable cities.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, please summarize why voters should elect you to the Venice City Commission.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think it's time to start thinking forward, new perspectives on old ideas and new solutions to old problems. I, I am an environmental advocate. As a lot of you probably noticed, I am for preserving this natural space and this beauty that we have, because I, I believe that it is at the core of, of the health and well-being of, of us and the environment and our economy. So we all have to be mindful of that. I implore all of you to, to check out, you know, my website to, to look further into that, bryankellyforvenice.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Wilson, please summarize why voters should elect you as a Venice City Commissioner.
Ceiling from my closing comments, but, but the reason why I really narrow it down to the significant difference is one of experience. I'm an experienced business leader. I've been president of a large, large insurance agency for many, many years. I'm an experienced nonprofit leader. I've been active on boards, and I've been president of, and been involved in, in almost numerous organizations over 27 years here in Venice. I'm also an experienced civic leader. I mean, I currently serve on the Planning Commission while it's rewriting the land development regulations. And, and, you know, it's a very critical time. I've served previously on Venice City Council. The thing is, what I'm telling is, I can hit the floor running from day one. My learning curve will be extremely short. I hate to say it, but Venice City Council is not the place for on-the-job training. We saw just, let's say all about a dozen years ago, what happens when you elect inexperienced people, especially if they put their own wants and desires ahead of what's really in the best interest of this city and its citizens. We can't make that mistake again. It cost us $1.4 million the last time I went off City Council. $1.4 million. The important thing is, I already know what I can do and should do, and more importantly, I already know what I can't do and shouldn't do to keep the city out of legal harms way.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Candidates, thank you for your participation. Thanks to our volunteers, including Carol Hartz, Linda Thompson, Nancy Morrison, and Rob Burgess. Viewers, if you were unable to answer your questions, please follow up with the candidates' campaign using the information provided in our online voter guide at 411.org. Finally, remember, your vote is your voice. The Sarasota League thanks you for being with us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.